Got it. Take it in there, man. Whatever. I got it. Oh, the neighbors. Yeah, so. I, I, what you, I have a little, I have a little. I think it's. It's a time of happy, happy month. But it'll stay safe. I don't know. We don't see this. It's that. They've been.
That's what I, I know how to say them.
I do, I do all my work. My, my, uh, stadium, my store, my, my, the life is truly. I'm so like, we'll be at. That's amazing. Thank you. I've got it.
It's just three years.
I'm gonna get them on United. Get boring. They, you guys have no worry. Okay. All right. Uh, I have your words. What else happened?
That's been past and change. That's why.
That is, yeah. It's very good. Greatly.
All of it. Some of them. Guys. What about? Found though.
Okay, now that's the, this path I care. Where are you? So. You want to take it to the green.
Okay. Don't make me forget it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the Neighborhood Board eighteen meeting for the area of Salt Lake, Alia Manu, Foster Village and Airport. As we start the meeting, um, we're gonna have our secretary call a roll call for board.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair. Okay, starting off with James Gower. Thank you. Nicole Heine not here. Patty Ega is absent. Uh, Joseph Amura, David Yomes, and myself. So we do not have a quorum because we need five for a quorum at this time. So.
Let's get the Honolulu Fire Department up. Everybody here. Okay, Honolulu Police Department.
Hey, good evening. I'm Lieutenant Sakai from the Pearl City Police Station. Um, our area for this board covers the Foster Village area. It's that one beat. So the statistics for the past two months. Let's see, in June, we had, well, there was no auto thefts in June or July. In June, they had one burglary and in July, they had none. Uh, thefts in June, they had one. July, they had one also. And thefts in range from shoplifting, excuse me, uh, theft from bicycles, theft from vehicles, just general thefts and U M V, so unauthorized entry into vehicles. We, uh, we didn't have any for June or July. So the safety tip of the month, be prepared for natural disasters such as hurricanes and our tsunamis and prepare an emergency kit. Um, so the past few months, we've been, um, I think district wide, uh, three and five, we focusing on traffic because I don't know if you guys heard, there's been a lot of fatalities lately. We just had one right in front of the, um, the Ice Palace. Or I think somebody was trying to make an illegal U turn. Somebody was speeding and it's kind of a mess on a young, I believe a young female lost her life. So seeing speed was basically the primary factor. So just be careful out there, please. Okay, any, any questions?
Board, any questions for Pearl City Police Station? Audience, any questions for the Police Department from Pearl City? Lieutenant, do you have any, um, information as to last week's shooting near the stadium on Kamehameha Highway?
Uh, oh, yes. So that one was, I believe there's some bunch of juvenile kids, I think from the Halava housing. They might have known each other. We're not quite sure. They're hanging out at the bus stop. Um, the white truck rolls up, started arguing and then the truck started shooting at them. Uh, nobody got hit luckily. And so they're working on some leads right now, but this time there's no arrests. But they more than likely know each others.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Appreciate it. Police Station?
Uh, Sergeant Cato, D five. Okay, for assaults, uh, for July, we had zero. Auto thefts was five. Burglaries were three, robberies and assaults, sexual assaults was zero. Regular assaults, which was misdemeanor types was two. Thefts was one and car break-ins was one. Calls for service total was five eighteen.
Any, any questions? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I forgot to ask this for the first person up, but I'll ask you as well. Um, is crime up this year or down this year or same this year? I know traffic is double the deaths of traffic, but what about overall crime statistics compared to last year?
I can't speak for the, uh, for the total, but I think, I believe in District Five as of right now, it's, uh, below what we are from last year.
That's overall. What about like, uh, hard crimes kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, for everything.
Everything, okay. Thanks.
How about any crimes at McDonald's Salt Lake? Let's just hang out. Anyway, um, you guys have any information, Lieutenant or Sarge, about, um, Wanaka Street? They had a gambling operation that was closed down and a few people got arrested last week or a week before.
Um, I know they did a, they did a raid. It was well planned. It was coordinated with federal partners, so, um, I think they're gonna try to pursue things federally as well, which is, um, more of a penalty. Um, but I don't have any specifics, but, um, Mr. Moore, regarding the statistics, um, we can get some hard number for you. Can give you guys some, some actual measurements and I'll have that available next meeting. Sorry about that. Um, one, one tip that I wanted to remind everyone about, it's also something that's along with the traffic fatalities is all the incidents of road rage on our streets. Um, so HPD is trying to advise everyone, um, in general, we don't want you guys to, don't tailgate anyone, try to drive predictably. Um, if you get into a situation, call nine one, nine one one immediately. Um, avoid engagement so you don't have to engage with these others. We suggest you drive with grace. Show appreciation for others when they allow you. Slow down and plan ahead during your trips. Um, if you get into a situation where someone is trying to accost you and you're driving, we advise you to leave the area. And also most importantly, to stay calm and composed. We're trying to, um, have everyone drive with aloha, not anger. Uh, part of the thing is, a lot of times, we take it upon ourselves to. We're, we're from Hawaii. We, we're fixers. We wanna try and make everything good for everyone. So a lot of times when we notice something, some kind of wrongdoing on the roadway, somebody driving recklessly, sometimes people take it upon themselves, I'm gonna block this guy. I'm not gonna let this guy come into my lane. That's, that's not the way to go about it. Um, it's not a competition. It's best if you, you notice a reckless driver, call it in, let us handle it. We're really good about, if you provide a license plate and a location, we will find that car within a timely manner. We've gone to people's houses, knocked on doors, who was driving this car ten minutes ago? And they counsel. If we can see, if we can witness the action on the roadway, we'll cite arrest if necessary. So please let us, let us handle those things and, and try not to, don't try to take things into your own hands, please.
Audience, any questions for the Police Department from Police Station? Come up to the microphone, Kevin. Thank you.
Say my name. Okay, Nancy Valdez. So my question is, I see a lot, you know, that sometimes I see officers roaming around. How much officers or cars in our district? No, in Salt Lake area? Okay, so they're go, what, from Alia Manu area to like Mapuna Puna? The cutoff. Cut off. Okay, thank you.
Is that your real name? Wait, Mr. Gower?
Hi, um, yeah, it was nice to see you folks out. And I think it was June or July that Kapalama kind of clean up with, um, I think some folks from the city, uh, Radiance Crew. So that was nice to see you guys out there, uh, pretty clean now. So hopefully that stream will be nicer in the future.
Lieutenant, yesterday, two o'clock in the morning, motorcycle fatality. Was that motorcyclist wearing a helmet, if you know?
Uh, yeah, he was wearing a motorcycle helmet, but, um, couldn't overcome the speed he was traveling.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Let's skip, uh, down from our agenda to, uh, our community events and concerns. Well, let's go with the Community Warrior of the Month Award first. Sorry. The Warrior of the Month Award was established on August eighth, twenty twenty four by this board. An award certificate is presented at our monthly scheduled meetings to a person, persons or group that provides outstanding service for the good of our community. The Warrior of the Month Award is presented to honor these people, past and present, who have greatly contributed unselfishly to help make Alia Manu, Salt Lake, Foster Village and the airport area the best community district to live, work and play. It is our belief that it is time and long overdue for our community to recognize these movers and shakers and what better place to recognize these remarkable people right here at this Neighborhood Board eighteen meeting, often referred to as the People's Meeting. With that said, our Warrior of the Month Award for August twenty twenty five goes to the Salt Lake Judo Club. We have a short presentation and then, uh, board, we can go up and take a photo.
Uh, Alia Manu, Salt Lake, Foster Village and Airport Neighborhood Board number eighteen wishes to recognize the Salt Lake Judo Club for their contributions to our community. The Salt Lake Judo Club, established in nineteen eighty-five, has proudly served the Salt Lake community for forty years. Founded by Sensei Dan Fujikawa, the club has built a lasting tradition of discipline, respect and excellence. Today, Sensei Fujikawa's students have the privilege of carrying on the culture of excellence he created. The dedicated instructors continue to devote their time and energy to ensuring the club remains safe, fun and welcoming place for community members to learn and grow in the art of judo. The board takes great pleasure in presenting the Salt Lake Judo Club, the Neighborhood Board eighteen Warrior of the Month Award Certificate for August twenty twenty five.
Salt Lake Judo Club, you guys better stop teaching my niece how to do these flips. She's, she's trying to flip this fat man over here when she comes home, so. Anyway, moving on to community events, concerns and updates. Um, before we get started with that, I just wanna make an announcement and have a moment of silence for one of our board members who recently passed away. He's, uh, been on the board for over twenty years, a friend of all of us. Uh, he's contributed to this Neighborhood Board throughout the years, uh, mostly with the Department of Transportation. He was a go-to guy, um, in, um, covering all the transportation needs we needed for this board, working, uh, with the state and city government and did a fantastic job. Um, be in our prayers for his, him and his family. Uh, Larry Beard was a, was a really, um, good person for this board and did tremendous things for this board. Okay, into community events, let's start with the Salt Lake Waterway update. Secretary Connie Morrow.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we just had our July event and it was very, very successful. Uh, maybe not as many participants, but then the heart was there, was definitely there. Oh, this time, um, in early July, the twelfth, we had done a genki ball making and the community cleanup at the Salt Lake District Park, which was badly, badly needed. And, uh, we had a total of fifty-six people show up, you know, but we made over one thousand and forty-four balls, which we then cured for two weeks. And on, uh, the twenty-sixth, we tossed those balls and we had about, um, just about fifty people come, you know, for that event too, which was really successful. Everybody enjoyed the, the light refreshments and all that, but the camaraderie, they, um, there were even people from, Representative Ichiyama is not here, but from her district area of the Moana Loa Valley area, they got the email blast and they showed up too, which was really a nice support, you know, cause it's kind of outside of the area of Salt Lake. But, um, we had some great participation and so we look forward to the next one, which will be number three and it'll be in November. So November eighth, we'll have the community cleanup as well as genki ball making again. And, uh, the twenty-second, we'll be doing the toss event. So more details will be coming. Thank you.
Other announcement is the Moana Loa High School Homecoming Parade on September twenty-sixth. We'll cover that again on our September eleventh meeting. We have one of the officials from the high school come out and, um, tell us, uh, what roads will be closed and, uh, this, this year is different. They're gonna be put up, uh, no parking signs, so that'll be explained at our next meeting on nine eleven. Board, any other events, concerns you wanna bring up, Mr. Moore?
Hi, Mr. Chair. Uh, are we planning a Christmas parade this year again?
No, not that I know of, but I was trying to go for a Halloween parade. Uh, I'm not sure if any, uh, permits went from the person that the church had put on the last Christmas parade for Salt Lake. I don't know if they're gonna do it again. I'm not sure. I haven't heard, but I'll give you an update at the next meeting if, um, we are having a parade again for the Salt Lake community. Audience, anything you wanna bring up, events? Valdez, you can come to the microphone, please.
Your chair and board members, again Nancy Valdez. So I mentioned before that I, um, I was gonna have the food distribution in September. I just had a meeting with, um, the nonprofit that I'm with, which is, which is Project Nehemiah. Um, we're gonna extend it, we're gonna push it to October. Um, so every fourth Saturday of every month, we'll be having the food distribution at Kehe Lagoon. So I work with, um, Naomi at Hawaii Food Bank. She's helping with the permitting. I guess now they're not gonna help with the permitting, so because she promised that she's gonna help us, she's gonna continue to help me with the permitting, so that's awesome. And then, cause usually you gotta just do, I guess they're gonna, you have to do it on your own, so Hawaii Food Bank is gonna do it for me. And then the other thing is, I just noticed when I was on the, on an app, Next Door app, that Kehe Lagoon, they're gonna be fixing the infrastructure over there, right? So they're gonna fix it fall of twenty twenty-five, which is about the same time I'm gonna have my food distribution. So I'll be calling, um, Halava Parks and Recs and see if on the weekend, where they're gonna keep their trucks and their materials, if it's gonna be in our way on that Saturday. So I don't know. So I'll just, I'll let you guys know on the next one. Follow up on that one. So that's about it. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Audience, any other events, concerns, updates you wanna bring up at this time? Board, anything else? Okay, let's move on to, uh, community agency updates. Let's have Aloha Stadium.
Aloha, Chair Yomes, members of the board and members of the community. Chris Kinimaka, Special Projects Manager from the Department of Accounting and General Services, joined by our interim Stadium Manager, Chris Sarayasu. For those who had not heard the news lately, we had a big Stadium Authority Special Board meeting yesterday. At that board meeting, we're very excited and happy that they approved finalization and execution of two very key documents for us. The first one is the Stadium Development and Operation Agreement and the initial ground lease. The reason those are so important is that those two together allow us to move forward with the demolition of the existing stadium and also getting into the design that will lead to construction. So that is a big milestone for us. What that does is it does allow us to keep the demolition schedule current. And we got exciting news today that the building permit or the demolition permit, I guess you call it, has been approved and our developers submitted the check to pay for it today. So now we're just waiting for processing for releasing that permit. And what we're looking forward to in the future is the execution of the Master Development Agreement and the Reciprocal Easement and Shared Infrastructure Agreement. That can take a little bit more time because that's for development of the rest of the district. But right now, we're still on target for our milestones, which is terrific. And the last big news is we are also able to announce what we hinted at before. You know, where we said August twenty twenty-eight was our aggressive schedule we put together for the procurement, working with our developer and with all of their due diligence, with their expertise from the development side. We are now looking at a March twenty twenty-nine completion date for the new Aloha Stadium. We have worked that through with all of our stakeholders, especially the University of Hawaii, and that does not put their Mountain West rating at, uh, risk. So that's our good news as we move forward. And do you want me to let Chris give his update on the stadium events first? And then I'd be happy to take questions.
Thanks, Chris. And so, um, just also wanted to thank Chris, the DAGS team, Department of County and General Services, WT Partners and Crawford Architects as our lead, lead consultants, our board of directors at the stadium, together with the legislature and the council members that all supported the project. So as far as the stadium, um, swap meet relocation is on its way. We're doing a lot of work in the Upper Halava Lot. We dropped in, uh, container units for the revamped, uh, swap meet that'll take place. Looking for a, uh, September, October move when the actual close off of the area around the stadium takes place. So we're moving right along and right in time with the, the mobilization for the demolition. So, thank you.
Board, any questions for Aloha Stadium? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, uh, I saw that same information as well, too. Uh, I have a little, I'm kind of a little disappointed, but I'll, I'm gonna ask you this question and I'll ask the state, uh, government the same question I'm gonna ask you right now. Okay, the, uh, according to the Mountain West, the minimum seating to be allowed into NCAA Football Division One is twenty-five thousand. And we started originally at thirty-five thousand back in two thousand and nineteen, then COVID hit. And then we went down to twenty-five thousand and with today's, we, and so I feel, okay, fine, we're going with the NCAA minimum. But today's article stated, we're going to twenty-two thousand plus. That's below the NCAA Division One standard. So that's my concern. Uh, people here, we, the majority that I know of, enjoy us being in Division One. Uh, but there is a big debate going on between the people over here that they, there's people that want us dropped to Division Two. And so there's been a discussion on that. So I'm, I'm just concerned about why it's dropped to twenty-two thousand five hundred.
So I can come from the technical perspective that we are still working with U H and making sure we're not at risk on those standards. But the reason we're dropping to twenty-two five at this time is really constraints on the actual funding that's available. The developer is still working to bring in equity and additional funding to get seating increased, but twenty-two five is the minimum that they're looking at right now with all of the due diligence, with the cost of construction and labor and materials and the time that we're looking at. The design of the stadium, however, is being built such that we can expand and add seats. And that's to be dynamic, even as we're going through design, if we get word of more funding and even through construction and after construction, that we can add more seats. We want to do that, so we'll continue to pursue that, uh, seat target. It can go up to forty thousand seats. From a more operational perspective, but, um, Chris, do you wanna add one?
I, I think that, uh, we're definitely working with, uh, U H and then also they're in contact with the Mountain West as well, as far as that agreement. So that's something that they are aware of.
We're not trying to push dropping to Division Two.
Mr. Moore stole my question. That was one of the questions. But when's the next time you guys will be with the Stadium Authority?
The next, the next regular Stadium Authority meeting is on the twenty-eighth of this month.
Can you let them know that Mr. Moore will be donating the twenty-five hundred seats?
Absolutely.
To upgrade the stadium if possible.
Love it.
Yes.
And the containers that's on, in the parking lot? What was those for again? I, I passed there today and I saw all of these containers.
Yeah. So that's actually gonna be for the vendors to, uh, be able to store things so they don't have to set up every time that we have the swap meet in the new location. And some may even sell some of their, um, items out of there. So it's a new addition to the, the swap meet that we're, we're having in the, in the revamped way. So, so we got a lot of positive responses, uh, from that, from the vendors. So we're quite excited with the changes.
Audience, any questions you have for the stadium? Please come forward.
Thank you. So I had a question with your, with the new Aloha Stadium. Are you guys gonna accommodate? Oh, with the new Aloha Stadium, are you folks gonna accommodate the parking? Cause my grandma used to live by the Aloha Stadium and they parking down the road. That's by the air post office. So are you guys gonna, I guess, is it gonna, the new Aloha Stadium, is it gonna provide enough parking for everyone or do they have to go outside into the homes by Halava Estates and all of that? for everyone or do they have to go outside into the homes by Halava Estates and all of that?
Mahalo, that's a very common question that we get. And everything that we're doing now is to make sure that we provide the right access and parking for everyone to get more availability to be in the site and attending events, everything else. So with the construction initially beginning, you're still gonna have a lot of the onsite parking. But keep in mind that when we redevelop the district, we're looking at multimodal access, making it easier for people to bike, to catch rail, to catch buses, right? To even walk onto the site, making it much safer. And as we progress through, we're definitely gonna be watching how, what the parking habits are. We are also still providing parking onsite. And as we build buildings, the parking will be embedded in those structures as well. So we're really looking at being effective on how parking is used throughout the day. We're going away from 24/7 black asphalt, right? Onsite that's not being utilized. We're making it much more effective for the whole district. And as we do that, we embed parking in that structure for the community to utilize. So we're really looking at, and I love to do this equivalent, is going back to Honolulu Stadium, where the community is right up to the boundary of the stadium. You're living, working, playing, you can eat, you can hang out, you can gather. But we're still providing parking and we're still providing all this other access. And then one of the examples that we gave recently is at the Bruno Mars Concert, which was sold out for three days, the Stadium Authority was concerned about parking and people backing up on the freeway. So they went ahead and they collaborated to provide better rideshare access and to even provide shuttle buses to nearby parking areas. And every single night, they had excess parking in the lot. In fact, they were so effective, they kind of said they didn't make enough money off of parking. The night that I went, there were 1,000 empty spaces. The other two nights, I think the, there were 600 to 800 empty spaces. So yes, there will be enough parking and we'll make sure there's a lot of access for everyone to come and enjoy. Sorry, long answer.
Regarding parking, did the state ever think about taking over the stadium marketplaces? It seems to be underutilized, except for McDonald's and Starbucks. That whole shopping center for years really hasn't taken off. And would probably be a good site for a multi-level parking structure. But did you guys ever look at that?
It's a popular question and I think part of the problem is, you know, the amount of funding that we have to be able to acquire land and develop it. So what we're trying to do, working with our neighbors, is really motivate additional development just by being adjacent to us, working to where we can help encourage more growth and revitalization of outlined areas. So we're not just staying within our boundaries, right? We're trying to help the entire area. At this time, though, the land acquisition there is not on the table.
Audience, any other questions for Aloha Stadium?
And I think, just to add, I think we, we looked it up real quick and I don't think that 25,000 seat minimum still exists under NCA rules. So I think we're, we're okay on that.
That's what I was handed on Wikipedia. There's a rolling two-year requirement for 15,000 seat attendance. And that is no longer, there's no longer a minimum. So we're still good.
Thank you for coming on. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the military. The Army could not make it this evening. Let's have the Navy.
Good evening, Aloha Cherry Yom's and board members. Chuck Anthony from Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. I've got just a couple of items. Number one, there was a change of command ceremony on August 5th. The Navy Region Hawaii and Naval Closure Task Force Command changed hands. So Rear Admiral Stephen Barnett has been replaced by Rear Admiral Brad Collins. Steve, Admiral Barnett had been there for about three years. But Admiral Collins is assured to see the decommissioning to its conclusion. Just a couple of other announcements about meetings. There is another Navy Closure Task Force Open House. They're held pretty much quarterly. Next one is next Wednesday, August 20th. Is that next Wednesday? I think so, yes. Okay. That's gonna be at the Oahu Veterans Center. And that one starts at, just wanna make sure I'm correct, 5:00 PM. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And then there's another meeting that might be of interest, the following Wednesday on the 27th. There's a Restoration Advisory Board meeting that's gonna happen. That's gonna also start at 5:00, or excuse me, that one's gonna start at 5:30. And it's the same location at the Oahu Veterans Center. The Restoration Advisory Board is, you know, really pertains to more varied issues related to the environment, mitigation, cleanup, that sort of thing. It doesn't focus on any one particular area. It goes into greater depth on various topics that are discussed and agreed upon by board members. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Board, any questions for the Navy? Mr. O'More?
Lately, there's been a lot of jet overflight in the morning stuff in hours and a lot of people are kind of upset about that. So I'm kind of wondering, do you know anything about that Air Force stuff? Or is that both Navy, Air Force, Army jets off flying around? Or just Air Force?
So in this particular instance, it is just Air Force, but I'll speak on behalf of Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, Hickam being the Air Force portion. So those flights were not actually part of a local exercise. These were what we call transient fighter aircraft that are going through, stopping through Hawaii and then continuing on to a rather large exercise. It's happening in different locations in Pacific. So the issue really is, what's the takeoff time? And so in many instances, they had to take off about 3:30 in the morning, which again can reverberate through many different neighborhoods on the island. In terms of takeoff times, they really kind of have to be set according to what's the time and the conditions at their arrival destination. So that kind of determines the planning in terms of what the takeoff time is going to be. I think, not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I think what's been expressed is that perhaps a better job of laying these takeoff times out beforehand might be beneficial to the public so that they don't have to, you know, wonder what might be going on in the middle of the night.
Audience, any questions for the Navy? Thank you, Chuck. Anybody here from the Marine Corps, Air Force, Space Force, National Guard? I was gonna ask them about your question. Port of water supply. Well, this is gonna be a quick meeting. Eric Landiardi.
Good evening. My name's Brian Gallagher, the mayor's rep for the city and county of Honolulu. I would like to start off with, we're really glad that we could help Aloha Stadium in issuing the demo permit, demo engraiding. Yeah, hope that all goes very smoothly. And yeah, we're looking for the, for you guys to move that forward. It's gonna be great. Thank you. So the, the city has made a major land acquisition on South Bear 10th Street next to the police station. That's gonna help our police department expand services. They've been needing to expand for a while. And so we're, being able to obtain that property is, is just one more step in HPD's expansion and providing better community services. The city is also working on a new affordable housing complex. If you may have seen the news, there's a demolition on 1615 Alawai. Some, there were some old abandoned buildings. It's kind of closer to that Alawai Boulevard area, closer to, along, yeah. Right, right where when you start entering Waikiki, you cross over the bridge. So yeah, if you know anybody who needs affordable housing, the city is gonna be working on that. And we're hoping, yeah, we're gonna start demolition and we're looking to start construction in about a year and a half. The city is also starting to work on a very large new solar canopy for the Alawai Golf Course. So definitely it's gonna be a great improvement for the golf course where we can reduce our electric bills and provide, you know, people covered parking, keep their cars cool. It is, it is an amazingly busy golf course, very hard getting a tee time, but we're always trying to improve it the best that we can. So following up with questions from, from last time, from the last meeting, there was a question about the, the date of the implementation of renewal changes for driver's licenses. So that started in January of 2023. And so just to give you some background, so residents who are 70, 72 to 79 years old, who do not have conditions that may impair their driving, they're, they can renew the driver's license for four years. Residents who are 80 or older may renew their license for two years. Again, that's with, if they don't have any conditions that impair their driving. If they do have dishes that may impair, they need to get a medical report. It's through the, actually DOT medical report. The city's Customer Services Department has a very good website. It's, it has a lot of these frequently asked questions. It's easy to find just driver's license. There's numerous places on that homepage that will guide you through the driver's license process. Things like how to update an appointment, what forms you gotta fill out. Don't forget, you're gonna have to get an eye test, you gotta get fingerprinted. And they'll take you through the whole process step by step. You still gotta show the multiple forms of identification and, you know, proof of address, things like that. But they're saying, and you can do a lot of the services they've improved to make it faster online. So you can pre-submit things. And there was a question, I believe, about the pedestrian crossing signal at the intersection of Ala Lilicui and Ala Lima. So the Department of Transportation Services is there. They see an issue at that intersection with pedestrians and traffic at that intersection and the timing of it. So they said they're working on improvement. They, they think they have a way with the way, especially the way cars turn at that intersection. Yeah, so they're looking for something in sometime December. They're actually gonna work on timing on the lights and the crossing signals. There may be even some, some minor striping changes, but they, they think they have something that's gonna help out. And then tying into that, I believe there was a question about speeding along various streets in, around the Salt Lake area and Salt Lake Boulevard. Thank you, Nancy. So yeah, DTS, they, they see there's an issue and they're gonna be, they're looking into it. They've been monitoring. An issue they have on Salt Lake Boulevard is the current construction that's going on. But they, they are analyzing it and they are talking with DOT frequently about where can we put speed bumps? Because we've been able to create a really good relationship with DOT, where it's actually, even on city roads, state DOT has, somehow they're able to create a contract where they can put in these speed bumps very quickly. And so we're really thankful for them. So they said, but in other areas besides Salt Lake, they're, they're analyzing it. And they, they have, they have more officers and then you're gonna see more of those, those speed sensor cables that go across the road, the ones you roll over. You ever seen those? Yeah, they're always monitoring people's speed and seeing what's going on. Were there any other, or new, new concerns?
Board, any questions for the city? Mr. O'More? Five?
Okay, I have some questions. I'll ask one, then rotate around. You know, the police department, how short are we on the police force? And what is the expectations for the future? Are we gonna continually have a deeper glut of more shortage? Because that's what it's, from what I hear from my police friends and stuff, they're saying that it might, there's a good possibility it's gonna get worse. We're gonna have less and less police because even though they're getting a larger class coming in, more are leaving. And currently, there's like a huge shortage. So what are the projections?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll go contact HPD, but we'll try to get your answer on that.
Because the reason I'm asking that is because it's, if, if it's a budgetary thing, especially with our current federal government powers that be in the White House, is throwing huge monies into protect, you know, their policing, the cities and so forth and so on. I was wondering if we could check into the, see if the federal government is gonna, you know, to help fund our police force to incentivize, you know, for increasing that our police department kind of thing. I mean, might as well if the federal government is so hooked on this, you know, protection thing.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty active on hunting down federal funding as much as we can. We, we track all of that. We get help from our Congress members locally and in DC. And yeah, we have these large tracking websites and, you know, Excel files that we're always like, hey, who can apply for this? We're, we're pretty aggressive about that. But yeah, we'll, we'll ask HPD where they are and what we can do.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. O'More, his second question?
Okay. The rail should be coming up in October. I was wondering if it's possible where you, we did a presentation earlier a few months back, but I think that was a little bit too early. If there's a presentation that this, I don't know if it's you guys with the city or who does that rail presentation? In October, when they open the rail, if they can do a presentation in October or November at a board meeting here on, on what's happening with the rail, now they're gonna, now that they're gonna open from Kalihi to the stadium and then to Kapolei kind of thing. And the concern with the citizens here in Salt Lake area is how we're gonna get to the rail systems, okay? Because so, it's a big concern. So that's why I was wondering if they could come to the board meeting, do a presentation, either October or November?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, the city does those presentations. Yeah, we'll, we'll ask them to provide an update at that time.
Board members, any other questions for the city? Audience, you have any questions for the city? Mr. O'More, your number three question?
Okay. Okay. The, I've had neighbors, this is the McDonald's senior gang that I kind of hang a little with. And we've had, I had three or four or five of them. They've been saying for the last 20 years or so, they've been on Lekini Street. They've been asking for a speed bump, you know, by the elementary school, Salt Lake Elementary. Because cars are driving crazy there and it's getting worse and worse. And they, they've been asking for speed bumps to be put on that street, especially around the hill, so that cars are gonna think twice before they try going speed racer type, driving up and down those roads, kind of drag racing, because their situation where that's happening. So they're, the neighbors, they, so they've been telling me, you know, Joe, we've been talking to you for the last 20 years, you know, and nothing happened, blah, blah. I said, well, you know, maybe you're not asking them properly. So anyway, I was just wondering on that.
Oh, yeah, we can take that to the Department of Transportation Services. Something, something they became aware of and that, when, when they included or they added speed bumps in the area, there were some residents that really didn't like it because as cars, they slow down and then they won't take it over and they speed away. If their home is close by, it's keeping them up. And I, I think we had a community member come out. So in this assessment of the entire area, they're gonna be looking at, you know, what are the speeds? They're, they're kind of trying to be a little more careful about where they place it and being cognizant of that, that issue. But sometimes it just, it just has to go where it has to go, but.
I think there was an Alana Punani resident that complained, that's way on the other side of Salt Lake.
Yeah.
That's not on the.
But for Lekini Street, yeah, we would try to apply the same thing. But yeah, we'll, we'll definitely, we'll ask DTS to make sure they're including that, that area.
I wanna not go to his fourth question yet. Status reports for next meeting, Salt Lake Boulevard. Can you get an update on the Salt Lake Boulevard project for us? Short update. And you did mention the left turn on Ala Lilicui and Ala Lima. Covered that. Covered that, I wanted the status on on that report. But you covered a little bit of it, so if they have more information, we'd appreciate that.
Yep.
At our next meeting. And um we've been submitting resolutions for for years. It seems like um the city not only the city, every time we submit a resolution, we get no feedback as a board, which kind of is upsetting to me. And one was, for example, Salt Lake Boulevard, we made a detailed resolution as to speed bumps in front of the schools, especially on Salt Lake Boulevard. Traffic is just at a high rate of speed all the time. And of course, the officers do not have enough time to do traffic enforcement um with their shortage, but um are you guys looking at these resolutions that we submit? Uh does D O T look at it? Because nobody ever responds back to us when we submit these resolutions. So it's kind of frustrating that um we get no feedback on this. And um it's not only that that one resolution on Salt Lake Boulevard. Some of the number of resolutions are different day topics within the community and um we get no feedback, so um I don't know if you want to discuss it with whoever, that they should take it more seriously, looking at our resolutions and at least give us a feedback. If it's it's no, then let us know. If it's yes, then who's assigned to it and what do you guys think you guys can do to solve that particular issue?
That that's fair. All right, yeah, we'll definitely go and and see what's going on with with the resolutions and I'll I'll try coordinate with uh Councilmember Cordero.
Because as far as Salt Lake Boulevard, we receive a number of complaints as far as the speeding there. And I think uh it's time to look at some traffic calming devices um for Salt Lake Boulevard, especially in the five schools that's along Salt Lake Boulevard, so.
Yeah, it's it's a good idea.
Thanks, Brian.
Agreed.
Okay, number four for Mr. Omar.
Listen, us more of as far as like, you know, when we go for driver's license renewals? Uh basically, there's no test or anything, right? That anybody ever has to do again once they're past their license, right? I mean, just go and fill out the forms, take your fingerprints and pictures, that's it.
I believe as long as you're in good standing.
Right. And see, my thought is that, you know, I think over time, people forget what they learned when they first got into driving. And I was thinking, especially for young adults and or people under sixty, either every the sec every other license renewal, they should make if if it's possible to do a like a quiz or or a little test kind of thing. It's not like you're gonna lose your license if you fail, it's just that you don't get your license till you pass. And because I think that by making everybody that drives realize what the laws and the rules are, it'll refresh the memories. And I think it'll help people to realize, you know, to think maybe, maybe have them think more while they're driving. Because the road seem to be, drivers seem to be getting worse and worse over time. And I'm kind of trying to think of what can we do to help remind drivers that, hey, when you first got your license, you you are careful, you obey the speed limits, you did this right, did this right, but as years go by, it's like, forget this, I'm driving the way I want to drive. And then you get upset and everything and everybody else and, you know, that kind of thing. Is there a way to maybe like do that kind of program?
We can look into that and see what the options are. Um yeah, it ties into what H P D was speaking about earlier. And reminders, what are the common things that they always see on the roads that are typical problems? Um, you know, the the typical tickets or just being a courteous driver. But yeah, we can, we can look into that.
Any questions for the city? Thank you, Brian, appreciate you coming out and putting up with all these questions.
Not a problem, no, you guys are great. No, thank you.
Yeah, one more question. This is is we we have such a housing shortage in Hawaii and I remember the state representatives or was it the state uh the the governor's rep was telling us they have to go higher because of the island thing, so everybody's going higher, but it doesn't seem to lower the cost for housing. It tends to also increase the housing as well. And uh I was thinking, have you guys researched? There's uh like Elon Musk have these single unit houses that he lives in himself that they can put up in like half an hour. It's like a very small kind of house kind of thing, you know, it just blocks up. It costs like somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand to put up, you know, to purchase and put up. And he lives in there as well, too, you know, when he go, he has to work in certain areas. So I was wondering how feasible is that kind of idea for our homeless or our people that need shelters that can't afford it, where maybe they could buy like three, four of those, you know, those single whatever? And rather than costing people like five hundred thousand, maybe it might cost, you know, ten, ten thousand or for simple math, ten thousand, one unit, they buy five units, fifty grand, right? And the huge cost, I mean, wouldn't that, you know, are you guys checking into that kind of thing to see what the affordabilities are? How feasible is it and is it doable and realistic for Hawaii?
Yeah, we we are currently doing that. Uh there's various forms of it. Um like the the city's Department of Community Services has the the they put up tents and they they'll they'll find homeless people or people who need services and they'll bring them and that temporarily house them until they can get them to transitional housing into a better place. They're they're continually going around the island, trying to help that. And then I the state and the city are working on what they call like kauhales, which is basically tiny homes um and things like that. And then an issue we have uh that we're actually looking at, we see some form of modular housing and and new forms of construction coming in. We are, we we know that's that's gonna happen in some form. Uh an issue we have is is gonna be construction inspections and permitting. Uh we're we're asking for them, hey, when we're we're open to it, you just have to meet the local laws and codes that are required, structural, electrical, plumbing. Um it's got to meet zoning, but we're actually open for for efforts like that to to help out, you know, lower income and people who have you know, issues of finding housing. The city is actively working through that with our community services department. So, yeah, we we recognize the issue, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Radiant Cordero's office?
Hello. Sorry, okay. Um aloha, Chair, board members and community members. My name is Sherry and I'm here on behalf of Councilmember Cordero tonight to deliver her monthly report. So I've provided a copy of Councilmember's August report and everything I will share tonight is listed um in her newsletter. So first, on the front page, following the tsunami alert, Councilmember encourages residents to sign up for emergency alerts at h and l alert dot gov. The link is listed here um to just get updates immediately, most effectively and straight from the source. Uh second page has updates on community concerns in this area. Um bottom of page three is details on upcoming community meetings that Councilmember is hosting regarding the City Department of Transportation Services. Updates at on planned bus route service changes. There will be two meetings specifically, um Saturday, August twenty-third at five thirty P M at Kalih Palama Public Library. And the second one, Wednesday, August twenty-seven, six thirty P M at I A A Public Library. And for information on the planned bus route service changes, you can take your phone, scan the Q R code and it'll take you to the presentation online and you can view the um like routes there. So um the following pages include community events that Councilmember has attended and updates from Councilmembers' Infrastructure, Transportation and Technology Committee, as well as the city budget updates thereafter. And for community members who ride the skyline, our skyline, please review and read page nine of Councilmember's report to learn about DTS informing skyline writers to deboard at Halava Aloha Stadium Station. Um this is for hearts testing and trials for their new stations. Um to follow up with you, Chair, um at the last meeting, you requested more information on Bill fifty-two, which Councilmember introduced relating to the maintenance of streams and other bodies of water. Um the regarding Bill fifty-two, existing city ordinance requires the city's Department of Facility Maintenance, D F M, to inspect and maintain all city-owned streams and also requires private owners of streams to maintain dredge and clear the streams to ensure that water flows unimpeded and does not become a public nuisance or health hazard. It also gives D F M the authority to inspect and if warranted, issue violations to private stream owners to maintain their streams. So ponds and lakes are excluded from this ordinance. However, over the years, the issue of the maintenance of privately owned ponds and lakes that flow into the oceans have become areas of concern. And since they are currently not subject to city oversight, Councilmembers, Bill fifty-two seeks to clarify that D F M does have enforcement authority over such waterways. So to sum it all up, Councilmember Cordero introduced Bill fifty-two to address the gaps in enforcement by authorizing a D F M to conduct enforcement of the maintenance of privately owned ponds and lakes that flow into our oceans. If passed, uh the bill will increase protections of our natural resources and environment by reducing pollution and keep our community safe from flooding, unsanitary conditions and public nuisances such as noxious orders, orders. So I'm happy to take back questions to our team.
Board, any questions for the council member? Audience, any questions for the council member? Thank you.
Yay, thank you.
You're lucky that the mayor's representative covered everything. Governor Green's office. Senator Wakai's office. Who the senator is here?
Hey, this uh update is going to have a lot of sports themes to it. Uh first of all, yesterday was a monumental day for the stadium. And I appreciate the neighborhood board for at least the past dozen years being supportive. I mean, we've included you in the conversation, uh we've taken your thoughts into account. And yesterday, uh it went from make believe and hopes and dreams to putting it on paper. When you put a contract together and put it on paper, then all of a sudden it becomes real. So the stadium ambition of creating a new entertainment district right down the street, you know, is actually going to come to fruition. I know some of you are going to um uh be fixated on some of the shortcomings. It's not twenty-five thousand seats, it's twenty-two thousand five hundred seats. We hoped that it was going to be deliverable in the fall of twenty twenty-eight. It's now going to be pushed back to March of twenty twenty-nine. Um there is actually bench seating in parts of the stadium, so it's not going to be individual seats that many of us had expected. But outside of those three shortcomings, I can tell you, this is a fantastic project because you as taxpayers are going to pay three hundred and fifty million dollars. You appropriated that in two thousand and nineteen, not a dime more. People think that this is going to be the rail two point oh and that somehow the three fifty is going to escalate into something much larger. It's not, that's your all in as taxpayers. Uh the beauty of this project uh is and the agreement is that Stanford Carr and his organization is probably going to build us a four hundred and seventy-five to five hundred million dollar stadium. So keep in mind that three fifty that is paid for by all of you, that hundred and twenty-five million, hundred and fifty million, that is all on Stanford Carr, not a dime more. And also another beautiful part about uh the contract is that um he has to deliver on in March of twenty twenty-nine. If he delays for whatever reason, any kind of circumstances, he will be penalized for it. Most cases, when the state or a county builds stuff, we actually reward people for delaying it, right? It's called change orders. Oh, we found this problem, oh, we couldn't get whatever, all kind of excuses. And you as taxpayers pay for that delay. In this particular case, it's like the private sector. You have to deliver on this date and if you don't, there are dollar figures that are accumulating to make sure that you deliver. So uh that that March twenty-ninth date is no longer make believe. It's not just, you know, like rail, okay, maybe in twenty thirty-one we'll have it, ah, just joking, twenty thirty-five, it's no more joking anymore. These are hard steadfast parts of of the the contract that have been put in place. And the other wonderful part about the contract is that the state is really crappy at maintaining any of the facilities it builds. In this particular instance, Stanford Carr and his group for thirty years, a toilet breaks, the light goes out. It's not criticism of the state and authority and the taxpayers that pay for that, Stanford Carr pays for that. So this is a really different way of be building state infrastructure, hopefully a model for us as we go ahead and build a prison and other unnecessary infrastructure that we do this in a public-private partnership to save you as taxpayers money and to deliver uh as we had promised. Uh two other sports-related updates I want to uh uh can um let you know about is that surfing. I mean, Hawaii is the birthplace of surfing. There were six states in America that had competitive high school surfing. Hawaii wasn't one of them, I mean, so shameful. But in twenty twenty-six, Hawaii will crown a surfing champion. We finally got surfing as a legitimate high school sport, appropriated six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do that. And finally, we're going to uh join six other states in having a state uh surfing champion. And along the lines of surfing, uh the Duke Kahanamoku Foundation tomorrow will unveil a new new Duke Kahanamoku license plate. You might see that uh there are two others uh that are very picturesque. Uh Polynesian Voyaging Society has one, as well as the Volcanoes National Park has one. So the Duke Kahanamoku uh license plate, which will be unveiled tomorrow, will be something beautiful like that. Not kind, not just a shaka, you know, the little decal or not just the art thing or or the H U H H. It's it's got to actually be a beautiful uh piece of art that's on a license plate that we passed a bill last year to allow for that uh to take place. So that's uh the update for me for this month.
Board, any questions for the senator? Audience, any questions for the senator? I I see Mr. Omar's hand, but I want to see if the audience has any questions. Okay, Mr. Omar.
First one, you said that the stadium deal is set, so that means they signed the contract. Uh I I I should, okay, walk that back. So the Stadium Authority Board yesterday approved uh the contract. It does have to get signed by Dags to become a legal document, so sorry, I I mistakenly heard on that part. It has not been signed, it's anticipated it will be signed before the end of the month. But the big uh hurdle was getting the Stadium Authority Board to approve uh what's outlined in the contract.
What was your second question, Mr. Omar?
So you're saying that the company building the stadium is going to be responsible for the upkeep?
Yes, for thirty years.
Does that mean then that they get to keep the profits of the stadium or what's the deal with the upkeep? There's been a lot of questions coming up from people in Honolulu stating about how uh they feel that the money should go to the U A, to the money to go to the state or combination. Because the company is going to be upkeeping this. Do they keep the profit? How's that gonna work out?
Uh yes, so there's, keep in mind, a stadium in itself is a money loser. You don't make money on the stadium. You where Stanford Carr and his his partners are going to make money is on the ancillary development around the stadium. So we have ninety-eight acres up there. Uh stadium will probably encompass about twenty of those acres. So the other seventy-eight acres, I mean, you've heard that there's housing, there's hotels, there's retail, there's museums, there's all kinds of things that are the money-making aspect uh for Stanford Carr, putting in a hundred and twenty-five million dollars of his own uh money. As for U H and their take, uh it's envisioned that we will have a lot of uh uh of lesses there. I mean, we have a uh a letter of intent from U U S L, that's United Soccer League, that's the minor leagues of soccer. Uh Major League Rugby is another entity uh that want to have a franchise here. Uh that have have given the Stadium Authority letters of intent to do so. Um with those two entities, they'll have forty, four zero expected play dates there. Keep in mind, U H plays seven games there. U H is an important tenant, but they're not the biggest tenant that we're going to have i- in the future. So having, you know, solid uh tenants like U S L and Major League Rugby there and hopefully Monster Truck, uh 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 B T S, Taylor Swift, whoever else might come there to fill in all the pukas uh to play as many uh play dates as possible out of the three hundred and sixty-five days, that's the 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 vision. So to your point, Joe, uh we're anticipating that U H will be able to keep parking revenues, concession, ticket sales, things that they weren't fully allowed to uh keep when they were in the the old stadium. So this is a win-win for many of the stakeholders. So this is a win-win for many of the stakeholders.
I have a question, Senator. Your body, meaning the legislature, is there any more?
There's tiny little body.
Not your body, the legislature. Is there any more interference regarding the stadium as to the finances that's supporting this project? And the reason I brought that up a couple of days ago, confusion in an article in a paper regarding the state comptroller or a former employee saying that the $350 million had expired, and they have to go back to square one. Is there any truth to that?
There's absolutely no truth to that. It's unfortunate that we have misinformation like that that went out a couple of days on op-ed in the Star Advertiser where a gentleman claimed that the money, the 350 I had talked about that was appropriated in 2019 had lapsed. You know, in government, we appropriate funds, and it usually has a life cycle of three years. It sits there. We don't want it to, like, take us 10 years to go build something that we appropriated today. So we have this rule where we appropriate money, it's pretty much use it in three years or lose it. So Mr. Kawamoto, who wrote that article, felt that, well, we hit the three-year timetable, and it's done, the money just disappeared. But the comptroller, this is the DAGs, Department of Accounting and General Services, the top dog in DAGs, was given the authority through the AG's written opinion to say that that money lives on and can be expended, the 350, for the construction of the stadium. So Mr. Kawamoto wasn't aware of that letter and legal document that allowed for the release and spending of that money. So it's just unfortunate. He created some level of controversy with that letter.
Any other questions for the senator, Mr. Omar? We thought this was going to be a short meeting.
Can I borrow your question time? Anyway, the question I have, the last one I have is, you're saying 20 acres of the 90 are going to go for the stadium? So of that 20 acres, that includes the parking?
No, that's just the stadium itself. Parking will be integrated. Well, I mean, when we first looked somewhat similar to what we see now, a stadium surrounded by a parking lot. But eventually, Stanford Carr and his group will put in all the things I told you about, hotel, housing, park, shopping center. And it's anticipated that he will do parking structures, right? Some people think that somehow we're going to have this flat wasteland area for parking. I mean, build a parking structure. We can have even more capacity than we have now. So some of it will be above ground. I think he had some initiative that would be, I don't know if it was below ground, but there will be parking structures there to more than compensate for the acreage that will be devoted to mixed-use development.
Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome.
Representative Ichiyama's office. Representative Garner Shimizu.
Hello, Chair. Board members and members of the community. Thank you, Senator Wacai, for being an advocate for the stadium. Thank you for that. My report is just going to be about some community events that my office has been receiving that might be of interest to Salt Lake Neighborhood Board community. If you remember, somewhere around July 20, there was a bunch of dirt that was on Ala Napunani under the freeway. I'm not sure the source of that, but our office made a call to the state DOT, and I want to thank state DOT for cleaning that dirt up. So that was one instance. Second instance, and I know we have Chris from Aqua Engineers going to be speaking about the Tripler project, but a lot of concerns have come to my office regarding the traffic from Tripler that backs up down Jared White Road and eventually affects the off-ramps east and westbound, and ultimately, the freeway traffic. So I've been in close contact with Chris's office. Chris is an amazing contractor, great heart, and he's going to give a great presentation. But I'm really thankful that we have a good contractor that's going to be very sensitive to the community concerns of traffic. And I'm also trying to be in contact with the state DOT to make sure that they're monitoring the situation and being on top of it. In fact, I did make a suggestion to them that they are going to be looking into and possibly enacting is, on the freeway eastbound, trying to extend a shoulder lane from the right turn that goes to the airport. So from the bottom of Red Hill, that intersection, going to the Tripler off-ramp and turning right to airport, trying to extend that shoulder lane to accommodate more traffic and improve the flow of traffic going eastbound. So that's one thing that we've been discussing and working on. Another concern that came through my office is wildfire concerns. I live in Monolo Valley. Valley is adjacent to Tripler on the east and Navy property on the west. Residents have been concerned. I reached out to the new state fire marshal. That is a new position that was created this past legislature and addressing the concerns of wildfire. So they are going to be, she is going to be coordinating with the military. Thank you, military, for your help in maintaining. I'm thanking you in advance because that's what we hope to accomplish is having the military maintain and cut down and create fire breaks as needed. And also, Army's not here, but I want to thank Army for also helping the Tripler traffic situation by relocating their entry point into their property to extend the queuing area and allowing more vehicles to go into the property instead of backing up Jared White Road. So going back to the wildfire, if anyone has concerns about wildfire vegetation, please contact my office. Lastly, there is parking concerns on Kukila and Hala. So I'm reaching out to DFM Roads to see if some of the vehicles parking there are legitimate, commercial vehicles parking, obstructing sightlines to make turns onto the street, which is causing a dangerous situation. I'm sorry. Lastly, is I just wanted to take this opportunity to make a few community announcements. Next Wednesday, there's going to be a Coffee with a Cop at Porridge Shopping Center at 10:30. Next Wednesday, also at 5 to 7 at the Oahu Vet Center, there's going to be the, excuse me, Red Hill Navy Closure Task Force Open House. And also, that same night, from 6 to 8 at Oahu Vet Center, is going to be the Makalapa Crater Navy Salvage Yard Open House. I also wanted to announce on Tuesday, August 26, at 6 to 8 PM at Aliamanu Elementary Cafeteria, our minority caucus will be there, having an open house. It's called the Listening Tour, and we invite the community to please come and share their concerns, their ideas. Board Member Omar, you're welcome. You have plenty, plenty of ideas, and we'll be there to have a long list of paper and pen to take it all down. But we welcome the community to engage and to listen to what is important to you. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Representative Shimizu? Audience, any questions? Representative Shimizu, at the meeting that you're having, what date is that?
August 26, it's Tuesday, from 6 to 8 at Aliamanu Elementary Cafeteria.
From what time to what time?
6 PM to 8 PM.
Can you extend it one more hour if you're going to invite Mr. Omar?
Yes.
Anyway, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Let's get into our presentation regarding Jared White Road sewer replacement project with Aqua Engineers.
I apologize, my name is Chris Miley. We'll make this short tonight. I work for Aqua Engineers. There's approximately 600 feet of sewer line that we're going to be replacing along Jared White Road above Ala Mahamoy Street. So if you're kind of familiar with the area, that's the last street before you get to Tripler, and then there's a corner at the top. So we, too, our biggest concern is traffic control. So we're not starting our work till 8:30. So we're going to make sure that the initial morning traffic fades before we get onto the road for closures. And then we're also going to be off the road at 2:30 every day. So that way, we miss the big rush coming out of Tripler. We'll also have two officers, HPD officers, that are going to be managing the traffic control at Ala Mahamoy and Jared White, since that's a big intersection. And we'll have one officer in a corner street to make sure that, I guess, drivers don't take that illegal right turn to go into Tripler to kind of circumvent our traffic control. So our biggest concern is the community. Is we're not going to be there for school drop-off. We're not going to be impacting any of the residents until such time that the morning traffic subsides. So we're looking to start August 25, which is the Monday, but we're going to slowly ramp into it and not do full construction, I guess you could call it, until September 2, which is after Labor Day. So we're going to use the week of the 25 to kind of gauge how everything goes and adjust as necessary. Other than that, we're looking to be complete in February of 2026. So if we can finish sooner, we definitely will. We're not going to prolong any longer than we have to. But we want to be realistic when it comes to this type of lane closure. So we'll be affecting the two right lanes going up towards Tripler, and there will be a single-lane contraflow with the officers directing the traffic at the intersection. So again, this is our best crafted plan first. This is our, we call it Plan A. But there'll always be a Plan B based off of what we see in the field. Like I said, as a senior manager, this will be my project. So contact information and email will also be mine. So it won't go to a standard email with no one to receive it. So like I said, we'll be there outside of the normal morning traffic, and we'll leave before the afternoon traffic arrives. So if anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Audience, any questions regarding Jared White Road?
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Appreciate it. All of board business this evening will be postponed until our September 11 meeting due to this board not having a quorum this evening. Our next meeting will be on September 11, 6:30 at the same venue. Again, we are, these meetings are held on Olelo, second Friday, fourth Saturday of each month. Board, anything you want to bring up before I end this meeting? Audience, do you want to bring up anything before we conclude? Thank you for... Are you related to Mr. Omar?
Thank you. I was like, oh my gosh. This is... Anyways, okay, again, thank you, Chair and Board members, Nancy Valdez. So this is for, I guess, maybe Senator Wacai and also Chris and Chris for Aloha Stadium. So last year, I had spoken, I went to Halava Housing. They had a concern because they were given 20 years left. Actually, it was, they were given 20 years that they were going to live over there. It was that, by the time we talked to them, it was 15 years. I asked, where are you guys going to be living next? She said, they don't give a F about us. So that, and she was there from day one. Her mom, dad, they passed away already, but her brother, her son, you know, they, they pay $3,000 over there because they go by income. But she said, because they call it at home, they take care of the, you know, the area, you know, they just know everybody over there. So it's sad, but I was just wondering, where are you? Who owns, who's, who owns that after the 20 years is over? Who's going to take over Halava Housing? Is my question.
Senator, do you want to address that?
Yes, correct. The good news is Puvaimomi is part of the state's big master plan of renovating its government housing. So first on the list is going to be Mayor Wright Housing. I mean, that place is going to look dramatically different than what it looks like today. I've seen some of the renderings for Halava of Puvaimomi. The state has already engaged a developer called High Ridge Costa to do the renovations. So to answer your question, you will have housing. You'll have better housing. Only thing different is, right now, it's like two stories, right? Walk-up. It'll probably be more dense, so you'll probably have multiple stories. I don't know exactly how much. So you'll have more neighbors, but I assure you, the facilities are going to be far superior than what you're living in today. So no one is going to get kicked out. No, 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 no. Okay, I think maybe that's based on when Highgate Costa will actually build the housing. But I assure you, you will not be this, I shouldn't say that. So when they're building, you might have to go someplace else. You know, they're having this problem with KPT, right? That they have to, like, move people out to, like, renovate, right? So there might be a short term, you guys have to go someplace else for a little while. You'll have housing, and then we'll move you back in, in two years or whatever it takes to build the housing. So there will be a short term. You're not going to be thrown to the streets. Short term, go someplace else, and then come back to something much more enticing for you to live.
Not me, I don't live over there. But so how long would, would it take for them to build the infrastructure? And is their cost going to go up now because you guys are building something new and making it nicer?
That's a good question. I don't want you to hold me to that, but I think, you know, the criteria when we have public housing is based on income level. So you make more money? Yeah, we could ask for more rent. But if you're making the same money now as you are, let's say, eight years from now when this thing is built, they'll still take that same percentage. So it's not going to be, all of a sudden, we're going to adjust these things because you got to pay for this, this new housing. The feds don't allow for that. It's purely, it's very much based on a fraction of your income. And to answer your question about infrastructure, Baysid and that area needs a lot of infrastructure upgrades, water, sewer, electricity. But High Ridge Costa, I'll get back to you on that, but I don't think that they have an issue with lack of infrastructure for the development that they're building.
That leads to the other question I asked a couple months ago about a resident that lives at Halava Estates that asked about the sewage and how the NASED is going to affect them.
That, I don't know, Sherby, oh, sorry.
My understanding is the Halava Estates actually comes off of another sewer system, goes back to San Island. Ours connects to Honoli Uli. But still, all of those projects go through the city, and their wastewater has to be approved. The city is going through an upgrade of the Honoli Uli system in its entirety to take care of developments in the area that's targeted for completion 2032, 2034, that timeframe. They should be fine.